In the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Which we know have any changes we need to make to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Thank you. Dave's motion is seconded by Rick to approve our agenda. Are there any questions? All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. Uh, the minutes from our previous meeting are enclosed in board docs as usual.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on February 12th, 2024.
I'll second that.
Motion, Hogs. Rich's motion is seconded by Jennifer to approve our previous meeting minutes. Uh, questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That clearly passes in also. And then vouchers.
Although, I'll move to approve general checking account vouchers totaling $810,325.24 as presented. I'll second that.
Thank you. That's John's motion, seconded by Dave to approve the checking account vouchers. Does anyone have questions on those? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Vouchers are approved. Uh, I picked up public comment sheet, turned it into Harley. We have no one to address us during that portion, so we'll roll on to superintendent update. Rich, and it's the second meeting of the month, which means we get to hear what's exciting and fun in our schools.
So principals can come to the podium and share highlights from things that have been happening through February at each of our schools.
For the elementary buildings, uh, we've been really busy getting our math pilot started. Um, that's not exclusive to our building. Other principals may mention that too. Uh, we're a couple weeks in now. The leaders had some training recently, and then our, um, rep also did some training with the teachers that are in the pilot, so we're encouraged so far and excited about trying out a new resource to support mathematics. Uh, this week is parent-teacher conferences for the 4K through 6 level. So our parent groups are partnering with us to, um, many of the buildings are doing book fairs and different events for families during conference time. And ultimately, it's just a wonderful opportunity for our teachers to provide updates to our families on how their students are doing at school and to learn from the families about the things that, um, kind of, you know, we need to hear from that perspective too about how they're doing at home and how we can partner. So excited about those opportunities Wednesday and Thursday night. Uh, 4K recently had a make and take event that was hosted over at Milton East. And so that's an opportunity, something that's really important in our 4K program, that we do opportunities throughout the year where our families can send one grown-up in with each child to do some kind of activity together, whether that's an early learning activity. Uh, we've done, um, like the Friendsgiving kind of events and maybe remember some Facebook posts with the different things going on. So there was a very good turnout and thank you to Milton East for hosting that. Um, and I think the other thing that's not happening in our world because right around the corner is state testing time and we'll, uh, start that state testing in March. Uh, Harmony Consolidated the first two to go right before break. So right now, we're working with our teachers and counselors to plan those testing schedules and the accommodations for kids with disabilities to make sure we have a really good salary plan going into that, um, testing. So we will be sharing out more information with families this week about which days we're doing practice tests and which days we're doing testing and, um, such a short thing that takes a lot of time and coordination. So we shout out to our, uh, school counselors who really had that up for us. Thank you. Hi. It's always nice going after K3 because they should just do such a good job of sharing all of the wonderful things going on, also the case six world. Uh, so like K3, of course, getting ready for parent teacher conferences, um, loving the new online pilot program for math and that also, you know, starting to prep for a total of it coming up. Uh, in addition, we are excited that we've been strengthening our partnership with University of Whitewater. And we have 14 new curriculum students starting this week. Um, and they'll be working with a lot of our co-teaching teams. It's a service delivery model and it's actually with Director Prostar who's, you know, helping facilitate that. So that's been very fun. Uh, so 14 curriculum students in the building, which is going to be a great experience for both them, our teachers and the students of Northside. Uh, we just finished up with a sixth grade. It was a whole experience, um, the African culture. And we had great community partnerships. Um, the teachers came up with it actually our last PD day about how do we make learning come alive, um, for this unit. And they reached out to all the families. There was a huge outpouring of support from, you know, positive notes to talking to their children about what they were learning, to spending in supplies and donations. And they had six days of immersive learning where the students went from like station or teacher to teacher, um, learning more about the African culture. Um, so keep your eye out for a video that'll be posted this week that's going out to families as well. Um, we also had a really wonderful cereal drive. We partnered with Do Good Wisconsin. Um, Mandy Chukonorp is our Do Good Ambassador of the Year, which is also very exciting. And she's brought that service project of the donation of cereal to Northside. And you are more than welcome to attend. Um, we're doing like, uh, dominoes. I don't know if you see that all over social media where they like line up all the cereal boxes throughout the school and then like dominoes they fall on, like the, you know, everyone's cheering. It's just a really fun way to, um, do a really good thing in a partnership with Milton Food Country. Um, we have our door decorating contest going on where we celebrated, um, we're celebrating WAC Black History Month. We're celebrating Chinese New Year and we're also celebrating the upcoming International Women's Month. So each door has a different theme. So we welcome you all at parent-teacher conferences if you wanted to come in and, and cast your People's Choice vote for each of the grade levels. That would be great. Um, we would love to have you and the kids have done a great job. And the rules are really that the kids have to do all of what they want to do behind it and that they are in charge of the door decorating, which has been a lot of fun. Um, and then we are really looking forward to hopefully seeing you there and thank you so much for your time.
All right. So, um, at the middle school, uh, we had a group of students who just finished, uh, performing our musical Madagascar. Uh, students perform Thursday for their seventh and eighth grade peers. Uh, they perform Friday for fourth and fifth graders from Northside who walked over to the high school to watch that. And then they performed, uh, Friday night and Sunday afternoon. And the kids did a really fantastic job. I feel like they really improved with each of their shows and a lot of fun to see kids, um, express themselves with all their talents that they might not necessarily show in a traditional classroom environment. Uh, we are just finishing up our winter athletics with girls' basketball and wrestling. Um, we had our February assembly today recognizing students of the month. Uh, we have a, a team of seventh grade teachers doing, uh, the math pilot. So, uh, they're piloting new math curriculum. Uh, there's, they've gone through the similar types of trainings that the elementary's have gone through. Uh, and then we did have our unity group, um, donate some money to Special Olympics. Uh, we had a group of students do the forward plunge and then also there's soccer sale of race spots.
Okay. Good evening. At the high school, we looked for a few things to do recently. Uh, so, uh, we are, the math team is currently, uh, starting the process. They are going to be piloting the new curriculum, third trimester here. They've been spending the last units, uh, prepping for that. Uh, we are in the last week of the trimester. Uh, so this is the week of exams and the preparations and the all the busyness and never ever stress at the end of the term. Uh, and then we'll be starting their try next week. Uh, the, uh, this last week was the FFA week. We had a very successful FFA week. Lots of activities from dodgeball nights and, uh, the barn family tournament. Uh, that was the betting for new classic, which has become a staple. Uh, but the FFA leadership did a wonderful job and I don't have a copy here, but, uh, the publication that they put out, that the A business group put out, and we'll get you all a copy of that, was really, really outstanding. Uh, arena scheduling, uh, is now in the books, so all three classes went to arena scheduling and, uh, we continued part of that process that had lots of, uh, there was a lot of really good things that we saw with that and, and we are prepping this schedule for next year. Uh, we are preparing for the ACT, which will be, excuse me, on March 12th. Uh, so as I've talked many times about chalk talk and the preparation for that, we are, uh, now all juniors are, uh, in the process of, um, preparing for the ACT. Uh, when we get back from the, uh, this is the, from the long weekend, uh, every junior will be in, uh, review sessions every day up until then, just prepping on how to, uh, continue to prepare for the exam. Uh, we went out to pancake breakfast for all the juniors. Uh, it opened up last year about the morning of the 12th. Uh, leave or remember would like to help serve pancakes to, uh, the, uh, the junior class that morning. Let me know, contact me. We had a couple that, uh, goes up on that last year and that was great. Uh, we'd like to recognize obviously some outstanding athletes recently as soon as we are completing the winter season. Uh, the girls' basketball team won their first playoff game. Holly Morehart broke a very long record, held record for number three pointers in a season, coupled with Kristi Wardy. We're very excited for Holly. Remember Kristi said that actually, uh, in 1999. Um, but, uh, the girls' basketball team had an outstanding season. Uh, the boys will be playing in their regional this Friday. Uh, and, uh, excited for them if we raise up the game on Friday night against One P. Was a very strong game. Then obviously this last weekend, uh, so state charm in a very, very special weekend for our wrestlers. Congratulations to Katie Sinclair, Tyson Peach and Maddy Peach. Uh, we have three state champions, uh, which, uh, path has never had. Katie Sinclair, three-time state champion, uh, my brother sister combo and our very first girl wrestler is, was quite something very special. Congratulations also to Claire Yalke, who took fifth, uh, uh, Mackenzie Usher, who took six, and David Billboard, who was a state fall liar as well. Uh, and I'm told on channel 15 tonight, there's a special on Tyson and Natty, uh, talking about a brother sister duo. So, uh, with that, we also are hosting Thursday night. We are, uh, facilities. It's a, it's a chance to host a lot. We're hosting middle school, uh, conference wrestling each night. We drove by the high school. You might have seen there was a minus, a few cars in the parking lot we drove by. Uh, then also on Thursday night, we're hosting a sectional girls' basketball game for Green McFarland and Uphorn, but with facilities now, we have begun to host more laws and, uh, John Speedback and his team do a great job with, by the facilities and music. That's advice for.
And there's two things that I want to share. Um, I think, uh, there's been some public notice of this already, but I want to congratulate, uh, staff member Amy Kenyon for being named a YWCA Woman of Distinction for this year. A very, uh, very prestigious honor. So congratulations to Amy. Uh, it's not only for her, her work with the school district because she does a lot of community things outside of her work with the school district, but, uh, but she's also, uh, a big part of her job with the school district are her, um, building those connections with, with local businesses. So congratulations to Amy. And then I just wanted to update the board that on February 15th through 17th, I attended the American Association of School Administrators, uh, Conference. Um, superintendents from every state in the United States, uh, attended. There were, uh, about 70 people from the state of Wisconsin, uh, that were there in addition to myself. And I attended really informative sessions on, uh, artificial intelligence, school finance, uh, school safety, uh, inclusion, uh, building relationships with, with community and making community connections were some of the main things. So of some of the conferences or the sessions that I attended. So it was really well done. One of the things we found out is that some of the same celebrations that we have and some of the same, uh, issues that we deal with in our school district and in the state of Wisconsin, people are seeing across the country.
Questions for Rich?
I'd just like to recall out to the technology department. Um, I did do the arena scheduling with my child at 6:00 AM on Monday morning and the fact that it never stayed to be was impressive. Like normally I do have these websites. I think you go to buying, like so many people go in. Uh, so kudos to the teams that put that fly because, um, as a parent, it was very nice to not have to see it go down with all of the, and the kids had to do it as well, but very impressive. So kudos to the, our technology department, the vice chairman folks and all of those because the system held up really well with the amount of traffic that I'm sure went through at that time in the morning.
Yeah. Thank you for highlighting that. And it's true. There, there's a lot of prep work that goes into that, an event like that, uh, on, on behalf of all kinds of people at the high school and we are really proud of the work that our tech department does. So thanks for highlighting that, Rich.
I have a question for the admins. How long is the pilot, the math pilot? Is it the whole rest of the year now?
Uh, at the high school, the pilot is going to be, uh, it's not the last, like five weeks. There's a window of five weeks. It's five or six weeks is ready.
And then they jump back to be regrow over the.
The elementary world is different. We're doing one unit from this pilot, this, um, company. We will be doing another unit from another one and comparing the two resources.
Please.
That's the same.
And then Jeremy, one question for you. When you said the, uh, ACT practice leading up to the ACT test, how much of the day did you practice?
Then starting our study plus, it's been happening since December. Uh, but a lot of the, what's going to be happening after the long weekend is the, the test prep and really going through the structure of the exam and remind them what to expect when they get on. It's, in some cases, it's teaching them how to do a, a film, an actual bubble sheet filling out with pencil, uh, believe it or not, we actually have to train kids to help. Uh, so, but that's, that all happens during the study plus.
Okay.
During the third period.
Sorry, one more question. The complexes are Wednesday and Thursday nights? And are they in the evenings as well? The book fairs and all the other, if you want to stop by and check them out? Okay. And they run until what time? Do you miss a pop? Eight o'clock?
Four till late.
Four till late. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Rich or our administrative update folks? All right. We'll move beyond that. Uh, three is the only committee report that we've had since last meeting and John is going to share what we worked on in that.
Yeah, thanks, Joe. I'll break it out into each one separately, uh, starting with, uh, first on the agenda. This person are meeting as well. Uh, it was the high school stadium bleacher project proposal. Uh, Steve shared detailed information on the current status of bids and final proposal. I felt we had a great conversation with many questions and a bit of debate. The current bleachers installed in 1978 no longer meet accessibility codes and safety standards. Although we are grandfathered in from a code standpoint, any changes made for safety or accessibility would require the entire structure to be redone. The current state budget has provided us with a one-time opportunity to address this and other existing capital improvements. All costs for this project will be paid without increasing the local tax levy and a vast majority of the project costs will come from the previously approved capital maintenance planning within the 2324 budget. If approved, the project construction would take place between mid-May and early August 2024. Included in board docs is additional information highlighting project details and design diagrams. Uh, with Stephen out today, I think we have Jeff, Ross and Rich, uh, here to answer your questions. And this is an action I am putting tonight.
And then just a, a couple of things that I'll add to that as, as Ross and Jeremy and Jeff come up to the podium to help answer any questions that we have. Um, it, it, this is a topic that we've been talking about for quite a while in our school district. It was actually all the way back to 2017. There was a facility study, uh, that identified that the homeside bleachers at, at the football stadium had exceeded their useful life and there were some significant accessibility concerns that were raised at the time. Um, one of the things that we've looked into since then is if we could address those accessibility issues without, um, replacing all of the bleachers, even though the bleachers, as John shared, the bleachers have reached the end of their, their expected life. Uh, they were built back in 1978. Um, and the reason that we can't just put up guardrails and address some of the accessibility concerns is because the current bleachers are not too, too code and we've been grandfathered in, uh, to keep what we have. But, uh, what we've, what we've been told is that if we make any changes to them, we would have to replace them. We'd no longer be grandfathered in. So we don't have an option of just doing it piecemeal. Our, our options are either to continue, uh, with the bleachers that we have that, that are obviously aging and there's some accessibility and safety concerns, or replace, uh, the entire bleachers. So a big part of our conversation over the last few years has been if we are going to pre- replace them, when would be a good time to do that? And, uh, we had kind of a unique opportunity this year with the late, uh, addition of the, the additional revenue from the state and, uh, the change in the revenue limit after we had already approved this year's budget gave us some revenue to allow us to be able to, uh, address some one-time facility needs that we had at this time. And so we feel like this is a really good fit, uh, with our available resources because we can do it at this time where it would not, uh, impact our, our tax rate. We wouldn't have to put in place any additional, uh, any additional revenue beyond the revenue that we have available, uh, between this year and next year. And, uh, Jeff, Jeremy and Ross can answer any questions that, that board members have, um, on both the history of the bleachers and the funding of this project.
Richard, sorry, go ahead.
I was going to ask, um, and I'm just giving that here. Um, are we pulling anything away from other items in, in our, through capital budget or capital plan? We're moving things around or?
I know we're going to be covering the finer capital maintenance plan in, in a few minutes here, but the short answer is no. The $700,000 of commitment annuals to capital maintenance out of the general fund would not be affected if we were breaking this plan. Um, as was already identified by John's summary, we do have a basket during the assignment already identified with improvement in selling of current year budget. We already have a continuance hold on some funding for next year's budget to help get the project across the finish line. However, this will end up coming down to timing as far as when substantial building is going to the district, either prior to or after the 30th. And as the project progresses, if we were formed with this, I'll be informing the board, well before you're ready, what that looks like and how it would, um, affect the payments between now and the end of the project's life.
Um, and the other question I have is as this was built, is there a contingency for overages? Meaning if we approve a budget tonight at one one and it comes in at one five, what happens?
So the current proposal right now, the motion is for a project scope of 1.6, that includes a 5% construction contingency on the project.
5% okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think in Tracy touching upon that, one of the things we, we talked at late that in the finance committee was, you know, there's, there's different variations of this project and then making sure that at the end of the day, we were able to save with confidence that these dollars aren't, if not already stated earlier, um, changing anything with as it relates to levy, but also not changing anything as it relates to dollars that are already allocated for destruction and things like that as well. So as we talk through those things, and then again, that was one of the things that we really talked about too, just trying to home in on, you know, what, what was the right version of this? And, um, and Rich mentioned earlier, the items with current bleachers that need to be upgraded and been known for a long time and the opportunity because of the alignment of the stars, if you will, as far as the budget goes, we have something that is doable now under, under this scenario that exists. I think the other thing that's worth noting and maybe outside the scope of this discussion, but, you know, when these bleachers were built and Jeremy, you told me this number because I asked you and I don't really call it anymore, but the enrollment at the high school at the time was 750 or something like that when, when the.
Of course, it's like eight, 25.
25 and we're at 1100-ish today. So.
1050.
1050, you know, so we're going from roughly 16, um, 1600, see, 1600, I wrote it down and I had a blank there, 1600 to 2000. So in, in addition to all the other benefits and the needs that were identified in there, it also is a, a step up in the ability to kind of keep our stance in right with the, you know, the changes over the last four years as well. So, um, it was, it was, it was really a discussion. Uh, we crossed a lot of things and asked against, asked and they answered a lot of answers to questions. So thank you for doing that. And, uh, having had the ability to talk through this year over the last couple finance committee meetings, um, I went from not fully understanding it to where I feel now I fully understand and support it. So thank you for everyone who put the energy and report from the patient trust for keeping it up to this point.
I do want to highlight a couple of things from, uh, go ahead, Ross.
I was just going to say, um, since he's not here tonight, a big thank you to Stephen and his team for all the work that he's put into this. Um, as you can see, he's not here tonight. He had to, yeah, unexpectedly, he's not feeling well, but big thank you to him for all the work he did for this.
Included in board docs with the memo are some, some diagrams that I do want to, uh, point those out. The one that Carly has on the board right now shows that in addition to a, uh, ramp on the, as you look at it on the left side of that diagram for access, you can see the, the handicap seating that's available and, and space for, uh, companion seating with the handicap seating. Uh, there's some railings, uh, up the sides and then, uh, that you can see the center entrance too. So with the new bleachers if approved, um, the main entrance for fans would be up the middle entrance and then moving out to either side. If you go to the next diagram, probably you'd see that. Uh, this diagram shows, uh, under the bleachers, um, that area can be used as storage. And in the, in the proposal, that's the recommendation from the finance committee and from administration, is that we would enclose the two areas that are shown on that diagram, which would allow us to store all of our day operations, uh, items and all of the equipment that, that we're able to store, uh, at the location right now. It would also give us the ability down the road, uh, to enclose more of those if, if, uh, we saw a need to do that. Um, and that was part of the, the extensive conversation at the finance committee was, um, whether to enclose some of those areas and how many. And we feel that, um, we can, uh, address , uh, the changes and enclose those two areas with, uh, uh, funding that we have available and with our available resources. And that would allow us to continue to store, uh, everything that we have. And then on the next one, Carly, you can see, uh, the, the main thing that I want to point out there is the fencing on the side and the guardrail system on the side. So you can see the guardrails and the fencing that'll be on the sides, which is another, um, safety enhancement, uh, in the bleachers.
Rich, on that, how high is that? Is it like above a person's head or is it?
I am not certain on that one. I don't know if.
I, I mean, bleachers identical to these and I would say no, not above your head, but higher than your waist.
So it takes weight to fall.
Well, yes, can't prevent all possible outcomes, but it's designed, you know, this is a 2024 design with fan in mind.
There, on, on this picture, there's a, see a human being, a duck is there. So he, he, he's taller than, than, than saying.
I don't know that that's a grown adult. I'm not certain.
The thing is, I too.
Looks like a person's a half foot two based on what we see there.
It's a high school soccer.
That's going to be against that edge.
And then there's one more diagram and I want to show that one of the things that, uh, we would like to do down the road, it's obviously not part of this project, but we know that, uh, most school, most high schools our size have an eight lane track and nine lanes for sprints. It allows your track team to host bigger events, uh, more, more participants taking place at a time. And we're not, this, this proposal isn't to make that change, but with this proposal, we would leave enough space that down the road, uh, that would be something that we'd be able to do without having to make another change, uh, to the bleachers. And I think that's an important part of this proposal. Uh, we would lose a little bit of parking right next to that, in that first row behind the bleachers. You can see where the handicap parking would be, would be with the new proposal. Uh, but, uh, between that lot and the other back area and the front and sides of the, of the high school, we do have plenty of parking for good events.
I think, and Rich bringing it up is a good point. Uh, over the last year and a half or two years with the new field house and the new pool that's, you're in Germany, talk about, different effects that we've been able to host that we historically had not been able to host. And then again, outside of the scope of this project, but having often we approached it in, in designing and positioning it so that the same thing that we can now do inside the field house or inside the pool, hopefully at some point in the future will be something we can develop as well. So, uh, again, having been mindful of that is, is just, I think, another good trait of the overall project.
So, sorry, what, what happens to the current year track season, season and items such as like the unity technique that is normally held at school?
So the timing of project falls, that's very ideal, as good as it can be for our spring sports and activities. So we have very minimal impact on track. For example, both of our meets that we host will be done by the time groundbreaking occurs. Uh, even when, um, construction or, uh, they're taking down the old bleachers starts, um, we'll be able to use the track for practices and use the field. Um, there could be an impact on our last, uh, soccer game, very last soccer game of the season, uh, but we'll find a way or find plans to manage that scenario when it comes. So, uh, but unity, all that stuff, it's all, it's already been kind of assessed. We'll be able to hold all the same events in different ways elsewhere.
One of the reasons that we're bringing you to the board tonight for approval is that we are up against a timeline to get things ordered and to get things moving so that we can meet that timeline. As Jeff shared, mid-May would be the start time for construction and mid-August would be the project completion. So it would be finalized in time for the fall sports.
A couple of questions that I wanted to, Steve is out here, so trying to get too deep into the construction. You mentioned that all of the things that we currently house are gonna be, have space, kind of chronological and technical and that's why I love broadcast stuff is like kind of that weird garage, that's all good, okay. Contingency plan, if we don't finish before spring sport or fall sports, we just not using standards or, or at least you're thinking about it?
Um, so completion is supposed to be very early August. Our first home football game, our home event would be like August 18th. So we have a buffer there, potentially a couple of week buffer. If something happened in which we needed to move a game or do something like that, that we managed to, you know, we have enough good relationships with like surrounding schools that we can make something happen. I'm glad it's easy, always looking forward that that could be a possibility, but I think with the buffer that we have built in place, I don't foresee that.
I did, I think that I might have misspoke too. I said starting in mid-May and ending in mid-August and I just looked back in my notes and the ending timeline is early August as Jeff had shared. And Steve, I asked that same question of Steven, he was very optimistic that this, that the company does this over that timeline very often because obviously it's the best time to get a project like this finished. So we're very optimistic that getting started at the start time and then being done in time will work.
Just one more question and a comment. Are we, for construction, are we thinking about future ready as far as like we plumbing new anything in or extra duct or conduit or maybe that's a Stevie question.
I think, yeah. Yeah, so there are, future exit term, right? Infrastructure that's in place for things like a expanded new ticket booth that'd be out in front, you know, kind of center stage on the side of the stadium. You know, so there are plans for future things and infrastructure that will be there and ready to use when necessary. So fiber, power, you know, you name it, so all that stuff is.
I think that's what I was coming, is what I'm excited about with this project. I think you kind of hit into this, Rich, is the railings when you go up the stairs. You know, if I did right now, when you go up, climb the stairs, you're basically just out there on your own. And I think there's an opportunity for someone to fall.
You just gotta use a shoulder.
Yeah. Does that have great balance? I'm looking forward to having a sense of brace there, so.
That is definitely one of the benefits of making this change. The memo talks about safety concerns and it's not a concern that the bleachers are gonna collapse, but it is definitely a concern that someone could fall. And with this having been an issue that we've been talking about as a district for five or six years now, and now we have an opportunity to make that change, I think that we would have a hard time defending ourselves if someone did fall and injure themselves and asked us, well, why, why have you kept it this way and you know that there's been concerns?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the administration and the committee for bringing this forward. I've been to too many events over the years when all I do is watch people with mobility issues or accessibility issues and I just, it's hard to watch and it's, whether it's friends or family or visitors and it's, I think this will make our stadium much more inviting, it'll be a great enhancement. So I just, I'm all for this and I like it. So thank you everyone for your work on this.
One last thing that I'd like to share that's kind of along those same lines is that, and people might not be aware of it, so I didn't show it initially, but I think it's important to note that right now for wheelchair accessibility, we oftentimes send fans across to the visitor's side, which when it's a parent or grandparent or anyone in our community that wants to come and watch a home event, to tell them that the accessible place for them is on the visitor's side doesn't seem like the right thing to do either, and we have an opportunity to remedy that.
And there's only two spots of that.
I do have just one more question. So when the construction begins, will that whole back parking lot be shut down?
I believe so. There'll be some staging, there will be some staging floor materials, but I asked Steven if we're going to have to shut that down for student parking and while we might part of this part of that, we're confident we're going to get through the rest of the school year.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I too would like to thank Edman and Steven and his team for the effort that they put into this. And I would, I would beg to, Rich said five or six year discussion and I think it actually goes back a lot longer than that. I've been involved in some facility looks a number of years ago and the bleachers were always on the radar. It just became a matter of when could we address that project? Because of the reasons that Rich outlined, the stars are sort of aligned that this is our best opportunity. You know, Joe, the freshman, sat in those bleachers when they were new and if you just told me they outlived their useful life, I don't know how I feel about that.
You still have some useful life, you know, Joe.
Let's hope so.
That's what you're hinting at, grandfather.
Let's hope so.
I do have one more, sorry. The vendor that we are going, that we've contracted to go with, the betting on that vendor, was it, did you get references and other?
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
Okay, sorry, I was not that committed.
Yeah, no, I could share that piece too, that Steven, if you were here, would certainly attest to that, but we had those very same questions and both the general contractor that's in the motion here, Gilbank Construction, and the company that's gonna do this potentially is, you know, highly regarded, sort of profession class type of folks. So we were very, when he shared that, we were very comfortable that this is the right folks to do this for us.
I too want to thank everybody, especially Steven, I wish he was here, hopefully he's watching, so thank you, Steven. I think initially, I've always been behind the project 100%. I did question the timing of it a little bit. I was a little bit worried about some of the financial stuff, but as we get through today and tonight, you know, I'm more convinced that we have it funded without touching education, pay, et cetera, the students. So I wish we were voting on the complete project, but that's a little bigger ask today. So I do support the project as it sits for phase one today.
I approve the high school grandstand redevelopment project, specifically contract A, general site and electrical construction work to Gilbank Construction Incorporated in the amount of $391,025 and $0.05. And contract B, grandstand construction, J L Industries Incorporated in the amount of $1,106,159. Project total, including construction contingency, is $1,602,631 and $0.05. I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Dave's mentioned it's seconded by John, as you just heard, I'm not gonna reread it, but Carly's got it on the board there, so are there any, or should we get it at least? Are there any questions on the motion that's on the floor or the project itself? I see none. All in favor of approval, please signify with a aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I call that clearly passed. All right, John, roll on.
All right, so next up was the high school scoreboard project. Administrators had to work on a plan to replace the existing scoreboard. This was built in 2003. Private sponsorships will pay the entire cost of the new scoreboard. In Board Docs, there is a rendering of what the new scoreboard will look like with the newly named Jerry Schlemm Stadium condition. And this is not an action item tonight. I'm sure it's in fact against the Russian.
Because it is a, it's funded by businesses, it's business sponsorship, it's not coming to the board as an action item. Really wanted the board to be alert to both the fact that this was gonna take place. It really is good timing with the change in the bleachers too. One of our biggest drawbacks with our current scoreboard, in addition to its age, is that to run the scoreboard, you need to be on the visitors' side of the field. And that's unusual. Jeff has to talk to the officials for all of our home events and explain that why and get an okay from them technically to be able to do that. So in addition to updating the scoreboard, we also will be able to operate that now on the home site, from the home press box on the home site. Jeff, I don't know if you have anything else that you want to share on that topic?
Yeah, so the secondary piece of this is not only scoreboard, but audio and sound system as well. So I don't know if you've caught any games or graduations at the stadium, how poorly that system performs. So along with this, with the money raised from our sponsorships, we will be replacing the sound system. The stadium, I agree, that's. That's nice.
I have a question, and yes, I have tried to hear it 50/50 and recall that you cannot. So my first question, I guess I'll pack this out to the folks that make sure since they were built, the first thing I noticed when I looked at it and it's beautiful is that it doesn't say Milton anywhere. Again, this, I'm trying to explain, so if everybody says the M is like, I'm just, that's what I was trying to ask, it's like, I kind of, I don't know, I just think that I kind of looked at. There's the logo and the M, but I don't know, so that's just.
So I'll say this, so we do have our two primary logos out there for the school district and for athletic logos. I think what's really important is number, we want to honor the two people that the stadium was named after. So when we renamed it Jerry Schlemm Stadium, we needed to really have that signed somewhere to honor that without taking away from Carl Thomas and his contribution to the vision. So maybe that's why we kind of went in that direction because we wanted to make sure both those people are still honored.
I'm not taking away from what it looks, it's just like for me and outside, I love it. And then that last, where is that, are you looking, are you leaving that line for a reason or are you looking for our last sponsor?
So we have, seven hundred and eight sponsors pretty rapidly. We're very excited about that, Steven and I, also considered all the sponsors. We've got some irons in the fire for number eight here, we'll have that.
Okay. I didn't open my plan like there's something.
No, just, you know, just one more.
Can you speak on how those contracts are drawn up and as far as the time with that sponsorship? I think that's important.
Yeah, and so whenever we have corporate sponsors like this, they get a sponsorship agreement, it's 10 years or likely. So in this case, I'm in finance committee as well, right? Is that, so basically we'll send, and this is pretty standard in athletics, we'll send these sort of these businesses an agreement they'll sign, this is for 10 years. After 10 years, we can renegotiate, we could change, things like that are possible. But that is a contract, I think, we did the exact same thing with like the baseball scoreboard and those sponsors, so very standard practice.
So it is the lesser of 10 years or likely.
Correct.
I wasn't at the last meeting where you discussed the stadium naming, but I did want to thank the administration for keeping the Carlisle Anderson on there. I think too often when, you know, people, they maybe can name something or whatever, the history kind of gets pushed aside and, you know, people my age would call Jerry Schlemm a legend, but people my father's or my uncle's age would call Carlisle Anderson a legend. So I just wanted to thank you for keeping him.
That was a priority, right? We're not trying to replace anybody, but just honor two people that they've contributed to.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and I would like to, obviously the sponsors we've got in line so far, you can see there, they're very familiar to all of us. We will see those dollar donations on a gifts and donations type of the list here at some point in the future and we'll certainly recognize and thank them at that point, but it bears a shout out now that we can do this because of the generosity of our community and particularly the folks that we've got highlighted there, as they always do, so.
And I'll add, a lot of these are public solid marquee sponsors, right? These are companies and people that contribute over and over again when we make a call, right? So 100% they are integral to our reflight department.
Yeah, we are incredibly grateful, so just wanted to make sure we get that out there. All right, that's just an FYI, we don't need action on that. Yes, you can keep rolling, John.
All right, next up, long-term capital maintenance and improvement plan. This is an annual update from Steve Ashanson, the Buildings and Grounds Department. At the committee meeting, Steve shared a five-year capital maintenance improvement plan and a vehicle and equipment replacement plan with committee along with the slideshow. These documents can be found in Board Docs and what would have been, Steven, would have shared, we had both us tonight, and answering questions. Ross, can you take over for that?
Ross, yeah, I'll start some things and then Ross is gonna add some things. We'll kind of tag team this in place of Steven. In Board Docs, there's a memo and the memo includes some information and also a recommended motion from the finance committee and we can circle back to that recommendation, but in general, we're looking for approval of the five-year maintenance and improvement plan and the vehicle and equipment replacement schedule, particularly the projects that are on board for this coming year. When the board, with board approval, then it gives Steven the green light to go ahead and start planning all of those projects, many of which need planning time right now so that we can hit the ground running during our summer months and throughout the, throughout the year next year. The actual capital maintenance plan, the five-year plan is included in Board Docs. And one thing that I do want to highlight on that before we walk through some of the specific projects, and Carly has it on the board, for each year when we bring this, the year that's obviously dialed in the most is the first year of that plan. So 2024, 25, you can see the different projects. We're gonna go through the slideshow in a minute and highlight the different projects for 24, 25. And then Carly, if you scroll to the bottom of that document, you can see for each of our schools and district office and district parks, there are different projects. Yeah, on the very last page, it has a total of $780,000 in projects for 24, 25, $700,000 of those are from Fund 10 and $80,000 of those are from funding. That's our, that is what has been our typical budgeted amount for each of those. And then there's also the one project that's taking place this year, consolidated boiler replacement that was included, but that would be out of this year's budget. What I want to highlight here is you can see that in the future years, there's significantly more than that 700 or 700 to 800,000 listed. What the board is approving tonight isn't that we would undertake those future years projects, you're just approving that this is our five-year plan, but every year, we prioritize and we trim down those projects to make them fit within our budget. For those of you, especially for those who have been on the board for a while, but I think all seven board members are aware that four years ago, we started a Fund 46, which is a way for us to make regular investments on an annual basis to stockpile funds for bigger facilities and capital maintenance projects down the road. The state's law is that you can't touch those funds until you've had them in place for five years. You don't have to have all of the funds in place for five years, but you have to have started the fund for five-year, a five-year window before you can access them. So we're still a year away before we can use those, but that would be another resource if we have our typical budget of that $700,000 and we want to take on more projects or if there's something, an emergency project that comes up, rather than spending down fund balance, we'd be able to access that Fund 46 a year from now. And then the one other thing that I want to highlight and then we'll walk through those slides is there's also a document that has the vehicle portion of the capital maintenance plan and Carly has that up on the screen. Again, there, it's a five-year plan. What the board is giving authority for is movement on the first year. And you can see there, the first year would be a replacement of one of our district trucks, our maintenance trucks. It would be replacing a truck that I believe is 10 or 11 years old that we're not comfortable having it go around outside of town, especially because these trucks are used for our building and ground, but they're also used by some of our extracurricular groups, excuse me, to haul trailers, to marching band competitions, there's choke wire competitions. And we want to make sure that if our staff or students are utilizing these vehicles or riding in these vehicles, that they're safe to go outside. So we work really hard to make sure that we're getting a lot of time and miles out of our different vehicles, but in this case, we have one that needs replacement and rather than trading it in, we're gonna keep it and use it as a soft truck in the winter because we still can get, we feel like we can get some. winter, because we still can get, we feel like we can get some use out of it compared to what we would get at this point for trading it in.
Rich, this question usually comes occasionally, so I'm just going to bring it up again because someone's probably thinking it. I recall Steven in the past, someone would ask, you know, why do we buy a new vehicle? And as I recall, there's, I don't know what the program is called, but essentially, from our situation, we give such a heavily discounted price on it that it's actually less expensive than looking at new vehicles of moderately new. And so except usually someone asks the question, so just so we get it out there, assuming that that same scenario in the past exists today.
We always look at the cost of used vehicles versus new and the shelf life of the used versus new. And with all of the different pieces going into that, we feel like for this purchase, buying a new vehicle would be the best thing for our board. And I don't know, Ross, on any of the things that I shared, do you have other things to add?
No, actually, that was a great summary of everything. We're not going to go into every slide in a second. As Rich mentioned, we're only asking for the annual payments of the seven hundred and eighty to be addressed tonight. The future dedication of cost is really for us to deliberate before next year, and we would have been able to discuss ahead of Fund Forty-Six becoming available in April of twenty twenty-five. If there are any larger projects on this list we'd like to tackle. The major benefit of creating that fund four years ago is our annual transfer into that fund creates a sinking fund in accounting terms that allows us to spend the funding on those projects as they are deemed to impact in our just of shared costs. That of course affects how we compete at the school district level, so we keep our annual investment level on our contribution there. Whatever we spend in Forty-Six and when we spend it does not impact us in that fashion.
We do want to walk through the projects for this coming year, so Carly has those up on the screen. As she scrolls through that, we'll give a brief overview. Obviously, Steven is the person who'd be able to dive into the details a little bit better, but there are a couple slides that have a review of the last three years of projects. So you can see, going back to the two thousand nineteen, twenty year, and the amount, a little bit over a million dollars was spent altogether on different projects there. In two thousand twenty-one, we were right around that seven hundred and eighty thousand that we're looking for for this year, but you can see the different projects that took place in each of those years. And then in twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three, on the next slide, again, seven hundred thousand dollars from Fund Ten. In twenty-one, twenty-two, there was the larger amount in Fund Eighty, because that was when we rebuilt the Central Park tennis courts. We purchased Central Park from the city and redid the tennis courts at that point. And then twenty-three, twenty-four, for this current year, again, seven hundred thousand dollars from Fund Ten and eighty thousand from Fund Eighty, and you can see the projects that were listed. And then if we go to the proposed projects for this coming year, there are some of those at each of our different schools. And Steven kind of puts together a before and after pictures, or sometimes just before pictures, because we don't have the after yet. But you can see the P A system at Milton East is obsolete, we can't get parts for it when it needs parts. This would be our last school to have that change take place. Also at Milton East, the abatement and flooring replacement for six classrooms, that would complete all the classrooms at East. These are the last six to go, and that flooring is from nineteen fifty-eight. At Milton West, eight different rooms that would have abatement and flooring replacement, and this would also complete all of the flooring abatement replacement at West, that also is from nineteen fifty-eight. At Consolidated, it would be flooring replacement for three different rooms. At Northside, the clock, bell, and P A system, which was original in the building in nineteen ninety-three, the new system is integrated to the flooring system and is the district standard that has been put in place at other schools. At the middle school, the replacement of five sets of interior gym doors. So current doors are original from the construction in nineteen fifty-four, and the new doors would allow the gym to be secured, but the current doors were not able to secure the gym. At the high school, a big project would be the roof replacement in section five. You can see in the map there what portion of the high school would be that. It's listed there as five A. That section is original from nineteen sixty-four. The proposed new roof would be a built-up roof system that should have a thirty-plus year life expectancy. We also have both Schiller and Central Parks, projects that will be replacing the doors on the restroom concessions and storage areas. Those doors are from nineteen ninety-eight. The new doors would improve security, allow those bathrooms to be locked at night, which would reduce vandalism. And then on the next slide, it has the totals at each of the schools, that overall total of seven hundred thousand dollars from Fund Ten and eighty thousand dollars from Fund Eighty. And then Ross and I are available for any questions, the board will decide.
I just have a quick question. On the capital maintenance plan, the one that looks like the April one, but it's listed out, there is a highlighted red section under Northside for the cooling system. Why is that highlighted, right?
That's highlighted, if you recall, in the fall, we had a number of accelerated projects for identifying the group. One of them was replacing the chillers at Northside, which are your original thirty-year-old system. When we put that plan into place, Steven identified early on that the refrigerant being used in the system we could get today is actually going to stop being supported in twenty twenty-five. So we started the beginning work in outfitting that building for the spring of twenty-five, in which case we'll be taking the money we set aside this year and putting it in Forty-Six and making that one of our first draws. So I asked Steven to ensure that that front is identified on here. Since the planning area is approved, we're going to put it in Forty-Six, so we can do it when the team comes available.
Thank you. And then the other question I had was, in the Fund Eighty, we have listed out, starting next year, the replacement field lighting, it's in here a few times over the next coming years. So when you look at Schiller, you have football practice area, the baseball field, and then the soccer field to the left of the pavilions. Are we putting in lights in the soccer field area now, or this is just replacing lights that are already there?
This would, again, with Steven out here, I don't want to discuss with him. This would be addressing the lighting system that we're going to place. We're not speaking to any lighting on the soccer side at this point. Also, just want to make sure that we're talking about years beyond twenty-four, twenty-five. These are identified projects that we're addressing, not something that we're necessarily going to tackle this time next year or at that point.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Tracy, I asked that same question about the soccer fields, heavy gate, soccer kids, notice the soccer kids practice in the dark club, baseball kids and football kids don't. So it would be nice to address that at some point. Couple other comments. First of all, I think having this rolling five-year plan is excellent, our organization too, and the fact that A, we have it, B, we've identified what's on our radar, we've put some best estimate guesses as to what it's going across to do these things, is just good planning all around. Current maintenance is not the, is most expensive way to take care of things, right? And the fact that we continually are looking at this on a rolling five-year basis and identifying what's going to be likely to need to be replaced, what we think is going across at this point is an excellent approach to it. And if Steven were here and telling that and telling us, you're being part of that as well, that is an excellent approach to maintenance, both in the present and looking to the future.
Ross, good question, I don't know if you can answer since you're not, well, Steven being here. Twenty-four, twenty-four till now, are we on target for satisfying all these projects on budget on task?
For current year?
Yeah.
Yes.
So nothing's going to get pushed to next year?
No, the only projects that would be, that are in process right now and not already underway is the consolidated boiler, which has been spec and at need, we are issuing that P O this week, if not last week. The reason we have it on here is because it's not yet completed. And then of course, the one that would go into five years is what we just talked about, the Northside Schillers, will be going into the spring of twenty-five by design.
And I know he's going to answer this question, if Steven were here, I ask Mike, just call him too. I totally appreciate that Gibson, the finding rolling budgets is awesome. It's great. I know it eventually comes down to choices. Is there anything else out there that is pending large dollar value that didn't make the cut for this year that could come off? And it's unfair for you to answer, Ross. Thank you, your comment.
No, there are certainly other things, and that was why I asked briefly to be Fund Forty-Six by design, is if something becomes more immediate, if we have, I'm not saying there is a situation, but if we had a roof section that was on the verge of collapse, we might have the ability to address it in addition to our annual investment capital maintenance to ensure that we could keep the plan on track, as opposed to having to do exactly that in the hurt and then start to defer the plan as we outlined in here.
Ross, Fund Forty-Six, just confirm this for me, so that's, you can't access it for five years once you start it, or is it a rolling five years?
No, since you started. So we established that in April of twenty twenty, and I believe the final date we have to wait for is April seventeenth of twenty twenty-five. The only stipulation on use of that funds as a, set up by design as a sinking fund is you have to have an approved capital maintenance plan that speaks to what projects would then eligible to spend forty-six on. So one of the major rolling reasons, the reason we do this rolling plan every five years is so that as needs arise and as our priorities shift to the needs, we have Fund Forty-Six available, the one in the approved plan.
So following on what John just said, so for example, I'm just picking some district maintenance office, roof restore two and three, a hundred and five thousand out of four years. If all of a sudden that section of the roof collapses, you could use Forty-Six because it's on this wall and bike.
Correct. Next year.
Next year.
Why is that April?
Yeah, understood, yeah, that's the intent. So again, some of them are bad, but they're there in the event that they're coming up. That's great. I mean, kudos to this.
Yeah, we also haven't shown this, but yes.
Yeah.
Worth noting again, while the plan is for five years, the only obligation we're creating tonight is for the immediate part of it, the rest is for future board to decide what they want to do with it. With that in mind, I will move to approve the five-year capital maintenance improvement plan and vehicle and equipment replacement schedule, specifically the items slash projects outlined for the completion in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Dave's motion is seconded by Tracy to approve our cap maintenance and improvement plan and vehicle replacement schedule. Questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, that clearly passes. One more, John.
All right, last up. On the agenda, Ross shared a budget calendar with finance committee highlighting key dates in budget developments and approval for the year.
So this is just the annual update on identifying some of those key dates as John just mentioned. Some of these are in the past already, as we've had some of those discussions as we consider next year's budget development. In December, we worked with the finance committee on our initial look at what the state budget will be for anything else next year as in the beginning of our twenty-four, twenty-five budget development. Today, we're looking at the capital maintenance and project plans that will take place over the summer. And then between now and the end of June, finance team, the business office, and HR team are going to be working on all aspects of budget development with Rich. That includes the staffing plan for the coming year, as well as budget development for all non-personal accounts. In the middle of August, I'll be bringing back the under provisions for the current fiscal year based on prior practice and summarizing what transpired during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. At the end of August, we'll have our annual reading, will be our first board approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Reading to the end of October, we'll have our original budget adopted by the board, and we'll certify our tax on the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And based on current scheduling, we will have our audit report to the board for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, no later than the second board meeting in January and October.
Questions, anyone? That's very typical for the timeline that we follow here in the most recent years anyway. Should that person be twelve, oh, four, twenty-three? Just messing with the brain.
It should be twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. Just following this one.
Okay. All right, no more questions? Thank you, Ross.
Thank you.
And John? For summarizing our finance committee work. Okay. Mr. Lanius is up next. Staffing report is A.
I'll move to approve the staffing report as presented.
Tracy's motion is seconded by Rick to approve staffing report. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Gibson donations are included.
Make a motion to approve Gibson donation, gratitude.
So Rick's motion is seconded by Ed to approve our Gibson donations with gratitude. As usual, questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That clearly passes. Meeting dates, Mr. Domon?
Again, a few upcoming meetings. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on Monday, March eleventh, so that's two weeks from today, on that same time, same place. It's important to note that that is our only board meeting during the month of March. We have an H R committee meeting for Wednesday, March sixth at three P M. Again, that's H R committee, Wednesday, March sixth at three P M. That'll be in first floor conference room. These aren't board or committee meetings, but updates, we have a staff advisory meeting on Wednesday, March sixth at four P M. And a benefits advisory group meeting on Wednesday, March thirteenth at four fifteen P M.
Questions on any of the dates? I see none. All right, and we have an exact session scheduled tonight, which I will delineate here in a moment, and just might point out that we will not be returning to open from that. So I will entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen eighty-five, sub one and sub C, and statute nineteen point eight-two, sub one, which is considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And we will be discussing the goals for the superintendents. So, thank you. Rick's motion is seconded by Dave. Roll call, Ed?
Yes.
And Jennifer?
Yes.
And Joe is yes. Rick, yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We are in executive session.